I call to one of the Town of Old Tiberon zoning commission regular meeting and hybrid meeting of Monday, June 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Even though 7:00 PM. At town hall in the first floor conference room at 302 Main Street Old Tiberon. Seeing as how Chairman Mark Calderella is absent this evening. I, Robert Friedman, will be acting chairman. And seated for Mark Calderella will be Mike Kelly. And Geraldine Lewis is also absent seated for Geraldine Lewis is Brenda Dyson. Also present besides me, it's John Henry and Laura Gray. Uh, that's the seated commissioners for the 12345. Our zoning enforcement officer, Chris Costa. Our recording clerk is Joanne Gally. And our consulting attorney is Matt Willis. And we have three, six, nine people in the audience in the room and six online, thereabouts. All right. First item on the agenda is regular business, minutes of our previous meeting. That being Monday, June 2nd. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? Good job, Joanne.
Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion to accept the minutes of June 2nd as presented.
Second.
John Henry makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Brenda Dyson seconds a motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd. Any discussion, all in favor of approving June 2nd minutes as presented? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 500. Correspondents, we have any correspondence? No, all right. Next up deliberations on Whispering Winds application for site plan approval for affordable housing development under CGS 8-30G. To construct 12 dwelling units and retain the existing single family dwelling unit. And the existing appliance repair business at 846 Middlesex Turnpike, assessive map 63 lot 5 in the restricted business B3 district. We have received. A draft approval motion and a draft denial motion. And it's prepared for the commission to consider. After deliberating on the matters, especially those individually called out in these draft motions. Have, have, have the commission had time to look over these draft motions? I have and Brenda has, Mike and Laura.
Most of that.
All right. The items of concern regarding an 8-30G wherein the zoning commission is pretty much restricted to approving things except for those which are detrimental to public health and safety. And we have during the course of the public hearing. Heard a lot about the plans and the layout and some things have been changed on the plans. In response, in particular to comments made by our consulting engineer Jeff Jacobson. And those have been addressed to drainage and other features in the site plan review. What's left to consider as regards public health and safety are the issues raised by the neighbors in particular with regard to water supply and potential influence on their existing wells for the residential properties nearby. So we take that into consideration and the water supply as proposed is to abandon the well for the single family house, keep the well for the appliance store. And, um, they keep the septic for the appliance store. They keep, they are tying in, they're tying in the well for the appliance store to what?
They're having two new wells.
Yes, they will build, they will drill two new wells as part of their application materials. The two new wells are located close to State Route 154. And according to the plans and the engineering reports adequately separated from the septic system. The existence of the two new wells is to provide for potable water for all of the living units, the dwelling units onsite and also to provide for adequate water supply for fire protection. Seeing as how.
So that the wells will not be for fire protection. Therefore, the fire protection is a holding tank that'll have a water truck to fill it.
In addition to the wells for water supply for fire protection, this proposed a 30,000 gallon underground tank. And the commission has looked at that and received testimony regarding its adequacy. But I for one find that in question. And we have received from staff reports that the 30,000 gallon tank would last for firefighting purposes of about half an hour. And so, public health and safety question there, we're thinking about that. The potable water supply, according to the plans received, is to be restricted to 10 gallons per minute flow rate. That is an interesting number for 13 dwelling units at 10 gallons per minute. That, uh, unless there are individual holding tanks to supply pressure for showers lasting upwards of many, of more than two minutes, the water supply, potable water supply is questioned. And in the event of a power outage, there would be 13 dwelling units without onsite water from the onsite electrically driven well because we didn't receive any info regarding a power generator backup for the well pump. So again, we're concerned about things that were in the application. So in the draft approval motion, in order to overcome the items, some of, some of which I'd mentioned, is that the drinking water well needs to have tests in order to gain approval from the Connecticut River area health district to confirm that they're, that they're adequate and they do what they're purported to do. The, um, 30,000 gallon tank is still subject to discussion, I believe. As to its adequacy to provide fire protection, safety and also its location. And its use during an emergency would restrict access to the site because it's located at, right at the entrance drive. So the draft denial motion includes again the fire protection. And fire protection in terms of more than just the flow rates from the wells and more than just the 30,000 gallon tank located under the access drive. So it also includes emergency access. In the event of one or two of the proposed wells failing. The site is developed to the extent that there doesn't appear to be a suitable location for a replacement well. And the nearest city water, as we call it, public water supply is approximately half mile away on the other side of Route 9. And to suggest that that be the source of water in the event of a well failure. Um, or initially, in order to alleviate the water supply onsite problems would be cost factor that would jeopardize the affordability of the project as a whole. So if the commissioners have looked at the draft approval and draft denial motions, what concerns do you still have?
This point seems like it would make sense for the developers to do the water testing because the water testing is a huge variable in terms of if the water is not adequate or if the water is adequate, there's still potentially the need to put tanks, water tanks on the property so that we would have to determine where they would go. There's still the factor of the fact that it would be a freely well that's going to have to be overseen by somebody with regular testing. And there's just a lot of unknowns.
The biggest unknown is that whether the wells are going to, is sufficient groundwater to, to support all of these units in this, in the shallow wells that exist in the surrounding house because that's the biggest concern. That is, I think, what I heard from the residents, their concern. And the safety aspect of it, I don't know if the 30,000 gallon tank is sufficient. Who knows what kind of fires could happen and as we were told, we'd get the people out of the building, more around basically. I don't think that's a very safe approach to fire safety. And then in addition to that, the fact that if the fire vehicles are in the driveway, won't be any other emergency vehicle be able to get beyond them. So the whole thing seems very precarious.
All right, Mike.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with what John has said. I know you had mentioned it last time about trying to scale back the project. I don't know if that's still something that the applicant would consider. Make it, this would be a easier decision to try and let it go through. But I do have to echo the same concerns about the safety of the units. And being, I know the walls are rated, what, two hours? I just think there's a lot to overcome in the current form that it would look to be good. So I, I struggle with this one. In his current form.
Yeah. All right.
Well, I know that the wells would need to go in and be tested before construction begins. And I realize that the applicants have addressed all the other concerns. They've widened the walkway in front of the units. They agreed to put in the big tank. CRAHD approved the wells, but well, the building of the two wells, but that's the, that's the wild card is the groundwater.
It's, uh, let's see, this is. I have another question regarding the, the letter from the Connecticut River Area Health District and their assessment of the well situation. That was, uh, and it was an email. Like I printed out. Did we receive anything more formal than an email with the comments from CRAHD?
We did get the engineered plan review.
Yeah. And in, in that document, was there, was there any kind of a declaration that the wells would, would, are predicted to be adequate for the supply of potable water and/or fire safety? What I recall from the email, I'm looking for the, for the paper if I have it here, was that they recommend that the well be, that the wells be drilled. Oh, here it is.
Right. Right.
The email of Tuesday, April 29th. From Gregory Mattis, registered senatorian. During our assessment, we noted that proposed septic systems were designed for areas where soil test data is currently unavailable. Craig has requested that additional soil testing be conducted, which we're scheduled to complete next week. I believe that was him. The next paragraph is furthermore, Craig will strongly recommend that the proposed wells be drilled before any construction work commences. This proactive step will allow the property owner to evaluate the quantity and quality of the groundwater on the site, ensuring a sufficient water supply for the intended buildings. Right, so with the water supply mentioned in this memo from Gregory Mattis. All I see is that the CRAHD will, will strongly recommend. It doesn't say that they do strongly recommend it, it says that they will. And in order for the zoning commission to make a determination regarding the water supply, it seems to me that I would be much more comfortable if I had a formal report from the CRAHD, which says that, that the wells must be tested and that CRAHD must approve the potable and, and flow rates for the well. I, what, my, my opinion as this memo from CRAHD as of April 29th. It's not sufficient to assure that the zoning commission has received a public health concern report that adequately addresses the zoning regulations regarding water supply.
So, so you do have an engineered plan review approval?
Right, and what?
That was dated by, for plans, it was dated after that memo.
Right, and in that, do they state that there is adequate potable water supply?
They, they will, they don't know until the wells are drilled.
Correct.
But this is the plan review. Obviously they'll have to do the testing when the water, when they do the drill.
So where I'm coming from is that any motion you should definitely include mention of the wells being required to be drilled and tested before, perfectly before construction begins.
Approval motion has that.
Yeah, right, but, but I'm building, I'm just laying the groundwork for my point about.
Okay, I'm sure.
We need to have the wells drilled and tested before there can be construction. And those conditions were not provided by the applicant. And so for public health and safety concerns of this commission and CRAHD, that the wells should be drilled. That's all I'm saying. And we don't have, right. And so at, at this point, well, this, just to touch base, we have received referrals from Architectural Review Board and Gateway. It's partially in the Gateway, so it's all in the Gateway.
Hold on, I just lost the referral list trying to find.
We received a report from the Planning Commission.
Sorry, I had that all prepared, but then I started looking for the email. Then I shut it. So we've heard from planning, we've heard from the fire marshal, the fire chief.
Right.
We've got a response from the health district. All right, sorry. Fire marshal. We've heard from our consulting engineer Jeff Jacobson, we've heard from Matt Willis, we've gone to the Architecture Review Board, the Planning Commission and Craig. And then the one thing too, I know we took in a lot of testimony, there's two letters from the neighbors.
Right.
So I'm not sure, um, the neighbors were concerned that these were not read into the record, but I just want to make sure you have the letters from Anita Von Dossel and Dorothy Spada. And if you want me to read them, I'll read them.
Right.
We've had them. So you've read them.
In the zoning regulations regarding development on a site where there would be a well drilled, it's not just a concern for the onsite situation, but it's also a concern for the neighbors. And that, uh, that's like age. Sanitation. This is. Public health, neighborhood information. This is, uh, traffic, stormwater. That. Let's see, this is. In our zoning regulations, in the site, I think it's in the site plan section. We have mention of the water and sewer service. The applicant will submit a written report prepared and sealed by a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut describing the proposed water supply and method of sewage disposal for the proposed development. The engineer will certify that the proposed water supply and method of sewage disposal comply with all applicable sanitary codes, rules and regulations. Before submission of the report to the commission, the applicant will secure the endorsement of the report by the Connecticut River Area Health District. And so I, I still have questions surrounding whether or not that we have the endorsement of a report. I'm, I'm looking for the data on the water and I don't see it. Nobody's endorsed any data on the water because there, none has been provided.
You mean the quality, the volume, right?
Yes, he doesn't find the body, he asked if, if the volume is in question.
You asked him about the volume.
Yeah, right.
Both the volume and quantity of the water you're referring to.
Right.
Okay.
Mike, um, let's see, I'm looking for the part where, um, it's in, it's in, no, it's in, I don't know where it goes.
51.6. Point five, maybe five.
My concern is that they, there'd be reasonable consideration for the protection of existing and potential public surface and ground drinking water supplies, not just for the site, but also for the neighbors.
That's right.
The neighbors' letters raise that issue and that's a concern that the commission has to be aware of. All right, so.
That's the, that's the unknown, that's the real unknown here.
If you live next door and you have a well, your concern is that your well will continue to operate as, as it historically has and as expected, even after there's construction and new wells being drilled next door or across the street as the case may be. If the commission has adequately considered the draft approval and the draft denial motion, without taking a vote at this point, is there an inclination to adopt one over the other? We could still go either way. It's an 8-30G application and in the draft motions both records our historic, uh, approval of 8-30G applications. As they have all to this point had public water supply in particular.
And I think the applicant has done a good job at addressing all the concerns on paper with the fire, with the tank and the two wells and all of the driveways and everything that was brought up. But nobody can address the unknown and that's my concern, which is the surrounding area. Everybody's living on those wells and nobody can, they can't make sure it's, I don't know how that falls in 830G approval and disapproval, but I think it's a big concern for the, for the rest of the neighborhood. Because they run everybody out of water, if it runs out of water. I don't know if it will or not, but if it does, it's a serious issue.
While it's not a requirement that an 8-30G housing development have public water supply in this particular case, on this particular location, the density of the dwelling units and the requirement that two new wells be drilled is, is a factor that we consider.
How do you weigh in the neighborhood effect? You know what I mean? It's not anything to do with 830 application, 830G application, it's not in the regulations. But it's a concern.
All right.
So to answer your question about which way are we leaning, I think we can tell where I'm leaning. I'm leaning to deny the motion, deny the application of those concerns.
Understood. Mike?
As I said before, I'm struggling with it. I would like it to go through, but in its current form, I do not think I could approve. I'll be brutally honest.
Laura?
Um, none of us are experts on the, um, the groundwater and the aquifer underground. And I agree, we haven't received enough data on whether the, uh, the two wells will support such a high density, yeah, you know, high density housing development.
Right. And.
I agree, for many unknowns, the water variable has been the big issue for, in terms of not knowing what we're dealing with and capacity.
So historically, in my experience on the commission, if there were to be a motion to deny, the motion to deny would have to be approved by the majority. If not, then you don't have anything because you have a motion to deny that didn't pass. If you have a motion to approve and it doesn't pass, then that's the same effect as if the motion were, were not, were denied because the motion did not pass.
Correct.
And so with regard to the formality of making a motion, um, is it better to make an, making, is it better to make an emotion to approve and include the draft motion items from the denial side? Or is it better to make a motion to deny?
Well, it seems to me that you have votes for denial. So I think you should do the motion to deny.
Right, and if it doesn't pass, then we would have to vote for approve, for, correct, the motion for approval, correct? Follow that?
Just for the, for the record, there's someone JCR raising their hand to speak. And since the public hearing is closed, I'm just telling anyone who's online or in the audience, we can't accept public comment during the deliberation. So we recognize that you have your hand raised. However, the public hearing portion of this is over.
Right, the commission is considering all the materials presented and comments made during the open public hearing and that has been closed. And at this point, the only added information that might be acceptable is through staff. And we have, do we have any additional information that we might consider for our deliberations from our staff? And the answer is not this, not today. from our staff? And the answer is not this, not today. Alright, I'm sorry. You're reading from the.
You're, you're reading the whole motion?
Pardon?
You're reading the whole motion or?
No, I was gonna read the uh, the, the, the intro. Can I do that?
Sure.
And. In the draft denial motion, the Old Sabre of Zoning Commission supports and encourages more housing opportunities in Old Sabre. In the past fifteen years, the commission has approved seventy-eight units of deed restricted affordable housing through the Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty G and the incentive housing zone statutes, section eight dash thirteen M. These units have been constructed and are reflected on the Connecticut Affordable Housing Appeals list. The town additionally has approved under Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty G, nine additional deed restricted affordable units that are approved and under construction. The eighty-seven units approved all include public drinking water supply, public water for fire protection, sprinkler systems and are served by septic systems. Whispering Winds is the first affordable housing development in Old Sabre proposed with well water and no, just added water for fire protection. The tank being fed by the wells on site is a static supply. The zoning commission has reviewed Whispering Winds application or site plan approval for affordable housing development under CGS eight dash thirty G to construct twelve dwelling units, twenty-one thousand four hundred forty-six square feet total and retain the existing two thousand four hundred fifty-three square foot single-family dwelling unit and one thousand two hundred seventy-four square foot appliance repair business at eight forty-six Middlesex Turnpike, assessors map sixty-three lot five and restricted business B three district. And there's overlap into the residential A, the AA one as well. It encompasses two different zoning districts. Also in the Connecticut River Gateway Conservation, right? Uh, yeah, AA one. Section fifty-one point six point five A of the zoning regulations for site plan review requires as part of any site plan submission that the applicant demonstrate adequate sewage disposal, water supply and fire protection measures be provided for the development. So I make a motion that the commission deny this application for public health and safety issues that have not been addressed to the commission satisfaction in the application. There's fire protection and there's emergency access as well as water, water supply for fire protection. There's portable water issues and issues should there be a portable well failure. And in the affordable housing and condominium documents, the applicant has failed to include condo and affordable housing documents to the satisfaction of the commission's attorney. The affordability plans include language that is not consistent with Connecticut General Statutes. And the application failed to demonstrate that the deed restricted units will remain affordable for the next forty years since there is no guarantee that the portable water is available now or will remain available for years to come. The application failed to demonstrate that deed restricted units will remain affordable for the next forty years since there's no guarantee that enough water will be available in the event of a fire to save the buildings from destruction. In addition, there are site plan issues, some of which have been addressed, but those are not critical to public health and safety. And the density of the project is such that it might have been more easily approved if it were not so dense. And the commission did not modify the existing application to reduce the number of affordable, of, of dwelling units in total because the applicant indicated that um, economic viability would be an issue during the public hearing. So I make a motion to deny the application. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John Henry. Any discussion on the motion to deny? No discussion? None appearing, then uh, you'll take a vote on the motion to deny. All in favor of denying this application eight dash thirty G for Whispering Winds at uh, eight forty-six Middlesex Turnpike for the reasons I mentioned and in addition, the additional information in the draft approval motion signified by saying aye.
Draft denial.
Right?
Draft denial motion?
I'm sorry, the draft denial motion. I flipped the page. But, draft denial motion. All those in favor of the motion to deny signify by saying aye. One, two, three, four, five. Any opposed, zero. Any abstaining, zero. The motion to deny passes five zero zero. Next on the agenda is public hearing, the Mount Vernon Company, application for a special exception use for oil change facility at thirteen thirty-three Botson Post Road map twenty-seven lot twenty-four in the Gateway Business B four district. And applicant is the Mount Vernon Company, agent attorney Edward M. Keshaw. Public hearing is hereby open to close by July seventh unless something else. Mr. Ren?
Good evening, everyone. I'm to the record, Joe Ren, special engineer, nothing to go here in town. Um, so as you recall, um, first of all, with me is Damian Fox. Damian is a representative and put the applicant. And um, as you recall, we brought this in front of you preliminarily. Um, we brought it in front of ARB preliminarily, then our reviews feedback. Incorporated that feedback into the plan. Um, we've since um, submitted the application, obviously it went through the town engineer. Uh, we just received the letter from Jeff today. Basically, all of your uh, comments are addressed. We'll go through a couple of outstanding items momentarily. Um, right before this meeting, we gave you a um, a fresh set of plans. This was from last week, last Wednesday, it was sent to the town, uh, and they both heard up on the website last Wednesday. So the plans were available then. They, they advised us uh, to hold on to the paper copies that we had had because some or all the members had picked up packets already at the, at the counter. Um, so they, uh, we're not gonna make you come down and get more, but they said just bring them to the meeting. Uh, so that's why we brought those tonight. Uh, we brought those plans. Generally, the plan revisions were minor in nature. They were just really to address the town engineer comments and no other material um, changes to the plans uh, will need. Some supplemental information, some tweets uh, for engineering and technical items. But from a zoning standpoint, everything is, is very similar and you probably wouldn't even recognize really any of the changes to the plans if you compare it to. Um, also submitted uh, last week, the email on the eleventh and also with your packet tonight is a a supplemental uh, list of quantities and botanical names and sizes of the plant material proposed. Um, we did provide a landscaping plan initially, but it was absent that information. So in response to one of the engineering comments, we provided that supplemental list. In addition to that, there were some clarifications and updates on the signage being proposed, again, very minor in nature. Um, architectural review board did, CDs updated plans. They did approve the plans as submitted with no changes uh, last week at their meeting last Monday. Um, and you have those now in front of you and from the eleventh on the website. Uh, we did pass out these paper copies this evening, um, and you'll see that, um, the signage as well. Uh, all the lighting information is, is um, is the same that was originally submitted. Uh, with, with some clarifications from ARB on LED, uh, color temperature and so forth, but all of it meets or exceeds the bounds of Old Sabre lighting uh, standards. Um, so with that, uh, since this is really our first formal meeting, um, I'll just go over the plan really quickly. The site is located right across from Dairy Queen, uh, as you know it. Formerly, there was a very large building there with a very large parking lot. Uh, the parking lot is still there. The building has been demolished, but there are rubble remains of the demolished uh, foundation as outlined on the drawing. Yeah, the purple dash line, that's called out. That was a former building towards all of those. It's a very large building. And then you can look around, you'll see the actual asphalt parking lots in this crosshatch. Um, so that was all around the perimeter of the building. And also the, the parking in the front came right up to the front property line. So there was essentially zero front landscaping, uh, so not conforming to current regulations. What this plan does is it brings the site well exceeding the current regulations uh, for plant material, uh, makes it conforming where it's not conforming and then it exceeds it dramatically. Uh, presently, there's not a current plan to um, develop the western side of the site. Um, we, there was at our preliminary discussion, we talked about a car wash there. There were no formal plan for that. That is not part of this application as stated in the statement of use. The only thing being proposed is this um, oil loop uh, facility that's essentially drive-through. Um, and people have their car serviced, they wait inside the building, they get your car and drive away. Hence the uh, the limited uh, parking required on the site. And we'll get into that momentarily as well. So for now, the entire western side of the site, you can see it's more than half of the site will uh, be topsoil and seeded and it'll be basically brass and, and metal uh, for the foreseeable future until there's a future development plan that will also be brought in front of, through the process and in front of the board. Um, so dramatically reducing the impervious area on the site. Even when we showed a preliminary development on the western side of the site here, but still a reduction from the existing impervious since there's so much of it. Um, so with that, since there's a dramatic reduction in impervious, we have um, a significant improvement, a reduction of stormwater runoff. Uh, and then a, a significant reduction her, reduction or enhancement, I should say, of stormwater quality. As far as uh, the improvements, the building itself, um, the building itself was slightly non-conforming. A portion of it was over the front stepback line uh, in that area. The exist, the proposed building is fully conforming to all stepbacks. Uh, all coverage off the lower area, obviously, this is the building being proposed. This was the building that was there formerly. So it's, it's probably five or six times larger or more than what's being proposed. And the, the parking area that went all the way around this crosshatched area, all the way up to the front property line, that is substantially reduced too. And none of it is going to remain on the western side of the site. I've, I've been uh, told that all of that will be removed, leveled, leveled, topsoiled and seeded, grass while it awaits future development. So how the site operates is the, there are two um, two-way entrances and exits right now. One in this southeast corner and one in the southwest corner. For this plan, the one in southwest corner is completely eliminated. The one in the southeast corner becomes a one-way in-only, enter-only. Then there is a new one added more toward the center of the site, uh, that presently is just a one-way exit. Um, I met DOT out there. They said for this use, they wouldn't approve an in, in and out here and we don't really need an in to service this facility. Everybody would be going essentially the wrong way uh, if they entered there. Um, so enter here, counterclockwise circulation, really long queue lines here uh, to the building, uh, serviced in the building and then there is at least one car space here if they need to wait for this drive-through, this drive-by, pass-by lane here. This pass-by lane will hardly ever get used. It's really if someone gets in there and they say, oh, wrong site, and then they just need to turn out quickly. And also for mostly, most of its use will be for vehicles exiting. They only could go one way. They could only take a right turn. They can't take a left turn. Everything is signed and painted accordingly. Um, so they would leave the building coming here, take a left and then they would go their merry way. This is a one-way exit, so they can go left or right uh, from that location. The DOT did not have uh, any other real concerns about this. They actually think it's, it's an improvement. Um, but they would not allow, again, that two-way right now with the future development. Then they would consider the two-way there because there would be, that would be the, the, the sole entrance for that use on the, the western side of the property. So for before I go to landscaping, I guess we'll just do lighting on the site plan highlighted in yellow. We show the building mounted lighting uh, and the uh, standalone posts. Of course, uh, all town standards. These are actually twelve-foot high poles, so we're not maxing out at the fourteen-foot uh, dimension. Uh, so they will be less than fourteen, total height closer to twelve uh, with the flush faces and then all the posts are uh, five feet off of the, the edges of the pavement or greater. The, the building mounted lighting, everything is full cutoff, dark sky compliant. Uh, we provided spec sheets on all of that. ARB reviewed all of that and approved this, uh, approved all the elements of this project um, without question and without any changes. Uh, for landscaping on here, all the shaded green areas, we have our perimeter buffer here, the darker, that's the lighter green, the darker green there, that is an existing tree line along that western border and in the northwest corner. There are a few trees um, on the western side that will remain for the time being. All the light green will become landscaping, so we have the evergreen uh, buffer along those, those sides there, the rare and eastern sides, face ten feet down center. Um, we are supplementing street trees. Uh, if, if everyone's familiar with the site, the sidewalk is already in with the brick soldier course. That was part of a previous application. Uh, and there are street trees along the frontage too, some on DOT right-of-way that all the proper licenses and everything, the town has taken over for those trees in the right-of-way that the town will maintain those trees. Uh, most of those will stay based on the locations of the two driveways and some sidewalk work. There are one or two that have to be removed. Uh, but we are adding additional street trees there and then we are adding other trees on site. Now it's a bit of segue into the landscaping. So the landscaping is very robust, uh, even though we're not proposing anything on the western side. There are many, many um, uh, plant species there and plant material on that side across the entire frontage uh, that will be developed and then around the building and then uh, obviously in the uh, in the islands in the perimeter buffer, there are approximately five hundred and sixty plants. Perennials, shrubs and trees being proposed, well more than what's actually required by the, um, by the regulations. As I mentioned before, the parking spaces come right down to the front property line. There's essentially zero inches um, between the curb line and the front property line. You have a requirement of twenty-five foot green space or landscape area. So all of this is the full twenty-five feet, so we're taking all that asphalt away, provided all that green space. You could see the trees, the larger symbols, and then there's not even any lawn in this area. It's just all uh, shrubs, um, perennials and flowers, uh, so forth. Across the western side, uh, you can see similar and same thing. We have the freestanding sign in that location by that driveway. And then we have um, all of those shrubs and perennials and then all of that, as stated on the landscape plan, is just lawn or meadow uh, on that side as well as the two islands with the uh, perimeter foundation plantings as well. The landscape designer provided color photographs of mature, um, what all the things that they proposed uh, look like when they are mature. So you can see a lot of native things, there's, there are no invasive species. And one of Jeff's most latest comments, there are a couple uh, items that. Uh items that were called out that weren't shown in the plan and we'll we'll obviously reconcile that, but even if we took half away, we'd still be well exceeding. What the regulations require. Um so very, very robust landscaping plan. We um we also gave you. Renderings of the building, which. Either if you look at the sign application itself, you can see that probably the best. Um this is probably one of the most attractive looking. Um car repair or uh oil change facilities um that you'll see. They took into account all the town recommend recommendations. There are the hoopla on the building, all the shadow lines um and the. Uh dimensions around the building. Uh A R B couldn't have been happier with everything that was uh selected and provided here with colors and materials in building design. Uh with reverse cables and everything else, they're very, very happy with it. Uh as far as the signage, there are just two signs proposed. There's a um there's one sign proposed and the gable end. This is what we handed out earlier. That meets the town um needs or exceeds the town requirements. Um and then there is a a freestanding sign that is located right by the driveway as I mentioned before. And that is uh this sign and. The only thing that A R B had mentioned is where this says phase two ten, and I think they just wanted us to leave that building, right? They just want us to leave that blank white for now without any wording or anything on it. The only sign would be a sign that's similar in design to the one that was in that reverse gable. So with that, I think that's mostly everything in a nutshell. We did receive a first set of. Comments from Jeff Jacobson. We provided written responses. Back on on June tenth, within a few days, two or three days after we received that first set of comments. Um Jeff did review that and they updated plans, which you have in front of you. Provided this letter dated today. We received it this afternoon. It's dated um June sixteenth. Um and if I can just go through there, they're just almost all have been responded to and addressed. Uh there are a few things that he mentions and I want to just go through those. Um so comments one through three C were addressed, three D. Um they he is recommending an infiltration trench, which. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we're dramatically reducing the impervious on the sites or enhancing the water quality just by doing that. Or reducing the runoff just by doing that. Um but it's a it's a low-impact development feature. It's looked for uh by the federal and the store requirements and also by the Connecticut E E D. Is to add to handle, to retain and treat the first, it used to be the first one inch of runoff from your impervious surfaces. Now it's one point three inches to account for climate change and precipitation increases. Um so what we provided to to meet that requirement is really requirement, but bad line recommendation. Um is we provided an infiltration swell along this edge. Um so we have the arid bodies. And then there's a slight swell and then it goes back up to the parking lot. At the bottom of that swell, per recommendation of Jeff Jacobson, we have. Uh rounded stone in there, so we get really good infiltration into the rounded stone and then that is connected to a sand and gravel layer. That was encountered with soil testing in this area. Um so the water runs off, is graded toward the edges and it runs into that swell. Once it gets into the swell, it gets into the rounded stone. And within the stone, there are uh industry standard number of forty percent voids within the stone, air voids. That can be replaced with water. The volume of that water that's retained is more than one point three inches. Um that's recommended. What he's recommending in this comment is that we add. The same swell. He likes the design, but add the same swell along the western side. Now, we think that's overkill for a couple of reasons. Number one, this side in the near future is going to be redeveloped. And this driveway will be doubled in width, so it's going to take out that infiltration swell that was put in within a year. Um plus, we don't need it for the W Q V since we already do, and what we said in the response is that. Now, this is not all asphalt. This is just lawn and it's uh very large distance. This is one inch equals twenty feet. So that's probably roughly without scaling about close to a hundred feet. So it gets to travel over a flat meadow or a flat grass area or it could get to any. Uh property line and absorb into the ground. There's no uh channel. Up in the northwest corner, there is a little existing channel up in there. But if you look closely, the way the grades are here with the contours, they head in this direction. Or is that um southwest corner where some of the runoff goes now? But we're reducing that runoff by making that area all grass, so. Um he has it as a recommendation uh in there. We don't think it's a good idea, just again because it's, we already need it, that would exceed it. Um and it's going to be removed in the very near future and then that feature would need to be. Relocated or built somewhere else to handle the new development, so it's almost like doing things three times. Um so with that, this this area with topsoil and grass will absorb. Over a a flat. It's very steep, I can see, but it's very, very flat and gentle graded, so we think that's plenty. And really, all you're capturing, all the roof water goes to the swell. All this pavement here is all graded to go to swell, so really it's just this exit driveway on the western side. Uh of impervious area a little bit from this one, a little bit around the corner. We can, he did mention this existing swell. In the northwest corner of the property. It is already graded. You can see how it's graded here, has this bump in the grade, which which kind of defines a ridge, so all the water stays on this side. Um but if that was a concern for any reading, even though we're dramatically reducing the impervious, we could. Even fine tune that grading a little bit more to make sure everything goes in the southwest direction and not toward that swell, but. Again, that that swell right now receives all of this developed area and it's just going to be all grass and lawn. Um so we we don't feel that that is necessary. Um four A was addressed, four B uh talks about this handicap parking space here. Uh it's in the northeast corner of the site and we wanted to get it as close to the building as feasibly possible. Uh we do have eighty-eight requirements of sidewalk slopes and everything, so to meet the building slab elevation. Uh we got it to be uh relatively close within, I would say, about forty feet or so of the building where the other parking is further away. Um and it is a a non, well, it's it's it meets the standards, but it's a non-standard to what you're used to seeing. Handicap parking space because it's a parallel spot. Um to fit within the dimension of that aisle in there. We show the the striped aisle on the western side and then we show the handicap parking space. Uh it is a minimum of twenty-two feet, which is required in town for a a parallel parking space. But it's actually quite a bit more than that because you can see the the real smooth flares. The options to come out at a forty-five degree angle greet those players, so it's a very smooth transition in and out. Um so with that, there's a lot of flexibility. There's more than a twenty-two feet uh in there. The aisle is twenty-two feet long, but there's no requirement on that one. It's just the uh requirement of the parking space, which we even actually um exceed. Um he goes on to say that the grades all work with with what's provided. He wanted us to add a couple more grades uh in there, which can easily be done. That was four B, four C and D are addressed, four E. Um he talks about the number of the parking spaces, so that it's a good point, let's discuss that. Um so we are proposing six spaces up in the northeast corner. And we and plus one for the handicap parking space that we just talked about, so we have seven total parking spaces. The old Sabre zoning regulations don't um have this specific use for a quick lube oil change shop. For parking, uh as you may expect, you may have all been to one before where you basically just drive up to the door. You get out, you sit in their waiting room, they take your car through and then you get it and you can drive away, so there's no need for. Additional onsite parking other than for employees and an occasional visitor. So what Jeff recommended here is that we go by what the traffic report says. Traffic report was provided. And the traffic report recommended six to seven parking spaces for this particular use based on other similar uses. Mister Fox, that's here too, uh operates and is familiar with several oil change facilities uh throughout the state. And he can, if necessary, if you have questions for him, he can attest to that as well. Uh let's see, where are we? Um fi- five was addressed, six was addressed. So the last one remaining, we um I'll just do ten first because it's easy. We obviously know that D O T approval is uh required. We did meet them initially just to make sure we were going in the right path. Uh which we were. Um and they will not approve a plan until local approvals are enforced. So we can't send them a formal application, so we have local approvals, but we are in touch with them. This plan. Uh addresses what their initial concerns were with that center driveway being a one or two-way. We do provide all these turning radius of the old Sabre Fire Department ladder truck, so it can enter and can go around the same way. We did have to widen some of the aisles uh to fifteen feet or so, fourteen, fifteen feet in some areas to make sure that we contain those wheel pans. But we show it going all the way through the site uh and exiting out of the site as well uh with what we're proposed. We had to flare some of the driveways. Um accordingly and widen some of the paths, but that's all incorporated into this plan. Um so back to number seven, this is what we talked about before, the planting schedule and we went through the planting plan before. Um and then we provided that supplemental list, which Jeff then subsequently reviewed and based on his review of that list. Um he says it identifies three and a half inch uh October Glory Red Maples, although. Two of the five are shown to be sugar maple, so we can reconcile that. That's a simple fix. Uh in addition, Autumn Joy Sedum are shown on the plan. They are not listed on the plant schedule. Again, very simple fix. We can either delete it or add it to this list. Uh and the Roseanne Geraniums were identified in the schedule, but they didn't find them on the plan, so. Um we could replace one with the other or whatever it may be, but those are very, very minor uh in nature. That could be easily handled with a condition. Um so with that, I think we went through everything. Um I'm looking at the plan. I see the blue and the blue is always shown on our plan as the snow storage. Uh there's plenty of room for some stores. We have over three quarters of an acre on the western side. That's going to remain open for the time being. So with the current proposal, it just far exceeds the regulations of uh any of the other requirements. One last thing that I just remembered is the actual operation and use of the building, because Jeff brought this up in earlier comments, but they're all addressed, but I think it's important to know. Based on the use of the building, so everyone might ask a question like Jeff initially did, uh what happens with the waste oil and the waste oil filters? Um so there are, this building does have a basement. Uh there are slots in the floor where they work underneath. The waste oil is collected in a curved contained area right in the basement, in the concrete floor. Um and our main containers that have a curve around them as secondary containment. Um safety clean or an authorized environmental contractor comes over, they run a hose and off-hours, they run a hose through that opening in the floor. And they remove the waste oil, correct? Um so that's a licensed environmental process, um and that's how it's done in all other facilities. The oil filters, there is a self-contained container that will be outdoors and be um. Uh enclosed dumpster area. The entire container is self-contained. Uh in his waterproof and non-leachable container and the entire container is picked up by safety clean, removed off-site and then they put a new. Empty one down, so it's it's well thought out. It's been done before. Uh it's a process and um. We asked all those questions based on Jeff's comments. Those are the answers we received. That's how they do it at other operational facilities now. Um it's very safe and very clean. Um we couldn't really ask for anything more per response to those questions.
Do we have the elevation drawings of the building? I didn't. They're not, they're not in, they're not in what I got tonight.
No, not tonight because those didn't change, so with the initial application.
We never got plans for the commission for the initial application. Those are, so we're, that's why I was trying to save you in the email today. We got the. One and then we were waiting for the revisions and the revisions did.
Um the architectural plans were initially submitted on.
To A R B. So we only did enough.
No, we submitted eighteen copies, so nine go to A R B, nine go to zoning, we always do that.
There was nothing in my box. Well, I mean, either way.
Right, so.
But A R B reviewed and approved it. You have the front elevation there.
No, we need to, that's, we're looking for dimensions on the building, especially the height and things like that and. And there's a reference on the uh this this plan for uh. For light poles, so it says see lighting plan reference one point C, one one dot C. Is that, is that, is that, is that a written reference somewhere or is there a lighting plan that's not included here as well? I I didn't see a a one point C dot or whatever.
And the general.
And the sheets I received this evening.
Yeah, in the general notes, um probably on sheet two, the general notes. I know, actually, it's on the cover. He's looking at it right there. He has the full document, so one C is a lighting plan. And that was originally submitted. There's a portometrics plan submitted and there were light specifications submitted that I showed you earlier. Um those are submitted to zoning and A R B. We submitted them, because we made eighteen copies of that seal. I didn't.
Is there a statement of use?
Uh Ed Casello prepared a statement of use because it's a special exception, yes, that was all part of the original.
But it's, so this was the first packet and something that, because we don't have. That went to A R B. We're gonna have that. I I think we're just gonna make a policy from now on. While the copies come in, we're not gonna wait. Because we end up in this situation. Initially, I know it states I have to redo plans. Um but this has happened a few times to us. I don't know, we can talk about it later.
Are they on the the website, on the town website?
But the commission reviews their plans in hard copy.
No, no, we, I know we submitted them, but obviously there was a mix-up, so are they?
So whatever we sent went to A R B.
Or could we pull up the plans from the town website?
Can't use this for pulling up the website or it will throw us off the zoom.
Yeah, I would say, I didn't see. The reason I asked is, I was saying the use because I didn't see it.
Alright, so I basically just told you the statement of use. Uh other than the hours of operation, I just went through the lighting, landscaping, the trash removal, uh oil change operation. I mean, if there's any question, I can answer it. You have the rendering of the building. We have the building height here. We show it as thirty-four point four conform- conformance of the thirty-five foot height. Um I I'm uh relatively sure there's a there's an explanation on the building height below there. Um A R B reviewed and approved it unanimously. I don't, I don't know what to say.
How many people, how many people are working?
So at the most, five. We're open from eight A M to six P M, Monday through Friday. Saturday, eight A M to five, and Sunday, nine A M to three P M.
With the maximum five people.
Maximum five.
Any of those ships.
And hopefully we get to five, so um one of the other things they asked was um. That somebody from the county asked is um. So how many cars we do a day? So we had the similar place we have in Atlantic for twenty-three years. It averaged about forty point three cars a day, which.
You speak up a little.
Oh, sorry, yeah, about forty point three cars per day is what we look to see, which is about three to five cars an hour. Um there is no busy time like a coffee shop or like a lunch shop. It's um, you know, they're pretty much scattered evenly throughout the day. With probably the least being the evening, five to six would be the lowest amount of cars. And uh that's, I think that's pretty much the only questions that.
You have a question regarding the uh traffic flow situation. There's, there's one entrance curb cut. And there's one exit curb cut that is different. At the entrance curb cut on the northeast, uh I'm sorry, on the southeast corner of the lot. There's a left turn possibility with a one-way arrow. Parallel to U S Route one. What purpose does that serve? Why is there a paved uh one-way arrow from the entrance drive to the exit drive? If it's all one-way, it's a, it's a U-turn. That's all it is.
Well, it's a U-turn, but it also is the necessary.
Yes, well, that's fine, for those exiting the building and following the directions of the one-way sign to the head. And then they go west, and then they exit one-way back to Route one. I'm asking about those who enter from Route one, headed in a northerly direction, why would they turn to the west before reaching the building? If the only thing they can do is then exit back onto Route one, it's a U-turn.
So Bob.
So the pavement from the entrance drive, access drive, to the lanes exiting the building serves no useful purpose other than to make a U-turn?
It, it's, it meets the zoning regulations, if someone comes in here, say if my eighty-five-year-old grandmother came in here. And she realized she wasn't at Dairy Queen, then she can just easily go through the site and doesn't have to travel all the way around.
Just suggesting that if that was eliminated, it could be landscaping. And if we're entered from Route one and changed your mind and wanted to make a, a U-turn, you could go all the way to the northern end of the property. And go left and then go back to Route one and achieve the same purpose.
We have fifty feet of landscaping in front of the building, we have twenty-five feet of right-of-way, and we have a year twenty-five foot buffer, so we, we exceed the landscaping requirements, it's, they've done, it's similar, right?
It, it would actually be helpful when we do have, uh, like our delivery trucks come in as well, so they wouldn't have to go into the back.
Alright, that, one question, the, uh, along Route one, on the western side of the exit drive. There's a six-inch maple and another six-inch maple and a ten-inch cherry, and another six-inch maple. Uh, are all, all of those, one, two, three, four, four trees to remain, on that plan, it's just to the west of the exit drive.
So, if they're going to be removed, they have a TBR, which is in the legend.
No, no, not the new trees, uh, to the, in the, in what, the, the six-inch maple appears to be in the right-of-way.
Yep.
And the other trees are on-site.
Okay, so, so there are.
There, there, and there, right.
There are four trees here that are existing that are to remain, they don't have a TBR, so those are safe to be removed.
But.
Moving to the east, there's another six-inch maple here. That is, will remain. Moving further to the east, there's another one that has a TBR, and that one will be removed.
So the trees that are shown on the plan that are in the right-of-way, are those to be remain, or were those to be removed?
Um, well, I just went through them, but over here, they're not in the right-of-way, they're on.
No, 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 in the right-of-way, not that little jog on the west, on the left, the western side there. Now, that one there is in the right-of-way, and in between the two access drives, there's trees in the right-of, one tree in the right-of-way.
Yep, so both of those are.
The trees in the right-of-way to remain, or are they to be removed?
As I had mentioned, to remain, to remain, and then EBR to be removed.
Right, so to the west of the exit drive. Then you need to re- restore, uh, the, the count of trees in order to have one tree every forty feet.
That's why we have.
To the west of the exit drive, not between the two drives, there you go, west of the exit drive. There should be street trees planted at a rate of one for each forty feet.
There is one, uh, it's right there, it's existing and it's remaining. It was part of a previous application, and it was allowed to be on DOT property, and the town is maintaining the tree for the previous.
I, I think what his, what he's trying to say is it should be on
Other side.
The other side, even though there was one there for the previous approval. The site was non-conforming, and then the trees went in on the town right-of-way. And I think what he's saying is there should be one tree every forty feet within the front landscaping buffer on the property.
We have five hundred and sixty.
We have a diagram in the regulations that explains it clearly, that if you have forty feet, there would be a tree in that forty feet. And there's about a hundred and twenty seven plus feet between the exit drive and the western property line. So that would mean that you must have, you've got, you've got to have three plus trees over there.
Okay, so what about the existing pen and.
And it can't be bunched up, there must be one tree in each forty feet. Then you start over again with the next forty feet and put one tree in there. That would be a condition of approval, that they'd be planted at such a rate.
We'll take away thirty or forty perennials in that area and we'll put it through.
Alright, that's that, on the, um, sign document that we have here, the, the triangle of the built, on the building, uh, is that in the same plane as the face of the building with the garage doors? Or is that set back? And how far back is that set?
True.
It's recessed from, there's a, the front plane of the building, not the edge of the roof. The plane of the building with the doors is the plane that I'm referencing.
They, they asked about that.
There's another plan for the face in the triangle, and what is the distance between the two planes?
So they asked a similar question, if not the same, at the ABR last week, and the sign folks that we have answered that.
And the site elevation drawings would, I hope, show that, and, um, and they were, they were happy with that.
The second sheet shows the inside of that triangle and how it conforms to the regulations, the second sheet.
Right, uh, I'm just looking at how we, uh, regulate the size and location of signs on the building. That we, yeah. First question, is this sign above the roof? I see a roof on the building. I'm going from left to right, and I see a sign above the, the bottom of the roof, the main roof of the building.
I don't know.
Does that make this sign on the roof?
I don't think so, that's a reverse gable, so I would say not.
That's one question. The other, the other, the other question has to do with, um, did this yellow highlighted area, for calculating the area of a sign measured to a height of ten feet, according to the, the plane of the width of that wall of the building? If the plane of the triangle is different from the plane of that yellow rectangle. Then you've used the wrong rectangle to calculate the size of your sign.
Yeah, I know they asked that, so last week, they, um, the folks at ABR and our sign, they worked with somebody in the town, um, on that. And they went back and forth to make sure that was correct, that the dimensions were correct.
Well, I'm just asking questions about the, the location of the wall that the sign hangs on, is the wall that determines the size of the sign.
Right.
According to our regulations.
Right, so it ended up being smaller, so this, this sign, how it ended up in order to fit it that way, to work that way. The lottable sign is much smaller than what we were allowed, but because of the, the dimensions of that gable. Where the town thought it would look good, um, we went with the smaller sign to, to make it symmetrical within that.
Yeah, using the existing yellow highlighted area of sixty-five square feet allowed, and the proposed sign is thirty-six.
Yeah, it was about half the size.
And that's the square dimensions of the sign, it's not the actual, it's actually less than that, that's just six by six.
Well, when we get the site elevation drawings and we can determine where the planes are, then we can, uh, visit the sign calculations again. Can I ask, can I touch the wall off of this page?
Seventy-two inch square.
Can I ask a question while we're on this page? What's the note at the top left of the ridge? Let's say thirty-six feet to inches?
I, I don't know how they imagined that, um, we base it on, uh, average grade, that's not, it, it's in the zoning table.
I know, it's very table, it says thirty-four four.
Yep.
Oh, this is wrong.
That could be, that could be elevation, I, I don't know what that number is, architects do things differently. This is the formal documentation.
Jim, this, this gentleman online is not with your team, is he?
Which one?
Jim Simmons.
Yeah, he's with us.
Okay, so that's, I.
Yeah.
He's probably trying to clarify.
He can clarify.
I see he has the building.
Is there anyone else here, just so?
Uh, Jim and Rick.
Hi, my name is Jim Simmons, uh, I worked on the building plans, uh, for this project. And, uh, one, uh, if I go back to one comment, uh, I don't know that, uh, Damian addressed it, but uh, the, the connected driveway on the front. Sometimes, uh, sometimes the oil change does get a little busier, and the queue-up line does back up a little bit farther, and sometimes people turn into the driveway. And decide that they're gonna change their mind because they don't have, you know, time to wait to get the oil changed on. And we find that the connecting driveway there gives somebody who pulls into the site another option than to back out onto the main road, so, a- and along with what Damian said as far as, uh, deliveries with like UPS and FedEx and some of the other stuff. That, uh, to have the vehicle be able to pull in around the front and then easily exit, uh, makes a lot more sense than the vehicle parking in the street. Um, as far as the signage goes, um, the, the front gable, I mean, that, that roof is just, that, that roof between the doors and the gable is just to break up the plane of the wall, I mean, certainly if the town thinks that it would, you know, be better to have the plane of that gable uh, the same as the front wall of the building and eliminate the roof, uh, I don't agree with it, but, um.
No, 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 it doesn't have to be, the gable is fine, it's the location of the sign above the roof, the main roof of the building. That's one, and the calculation of the square footage of the sign is number two. The gable is fine, the sign's size is determined by the wall that it hangs on. And the plane of the wall is the wall that you measure in order to determine the size of the sign. The sign, six-foot square sign might fit to the right of the rightmost garage door. And it would hang on the wall, and it would be compliant, and it wouldn't have any issues at all, and the gable could still be there.
So.
It's the size and location of the sign simultaneously, that have to work within the regulations and not be on the roof.
So if, so to answer that question, um, if the sign that's proposed is larger than what's allowed for the portion of the roof, which would be the gable uh, where it's located, then the answer would be that we could move the face of the gable wall to match the plane of the wall below. So, i- in, in which case, it would be on the same plane.
I, I got to see it, I don't.
Hey, Jim, Jim, can you share that building plan?
Um, I'm not sure, you're asking me to do something that I might not technically be able to provide, um.
That's okay, just pull it up on your computer, and then they'll allow you to share.
Alright, let me, uh, alright, let me find it.
Clarify these questions for them.
Yeah. Uh, bear with me a moment.
Can I just go through some housekeeping while he's pulling that up? Alright, just so, I'm just gonna go through some housekeeping while he's pulling up the plan. Um, so we sent referrals to the building official, fire marshal, police chief, fire chief, Jeff Jacobson. Um, our traffic engineer, ARB, and health. Um, we've heard back from the building official, we have not heard from the fire marshal or fire chief. Uh, Brad Del Rio, our consulting traffic engineer, and I met with our police chief, or acting police chief. Um, for the site, there were some questions sent to, um, SLR, um, and those have not been, um, I guess, addressed as of today, so hopefully by the next meeting.
So one question, the SLRs are, so, um, they were under the impression that they were doing a car wash as well. And, um, there was, I guess, some confusion, so
Mm-hmm.
we asked them to make sure they told the town that we're not, that's not part of this. Cause, um, the, some of the questions they were asking me last week was about, involved a car wash. So, uh, cause we had, we had ordered the traffic study months bef, months ago before, so I think there might have been a little confusion between the town's traffic consultant and our consultant.
Is it, well, I think he originally saw the trap, the tunnel car wash plan.
Yeah, they said there was two tunnels, there was a lot of, there was a lot of different.
Then the, the other thing was, there was some discussion about having new counts done. Cause when the counts were done, it wasn't, it was like in September, it was, it was like an off month.
Right, so they wanted to have the counts done in, in the summer, but, um, I think one of the reasons behind that might have been they're thinking that there's a car wash and, as, as it turns to how much use the loom shot is. So that's why we wanted, um, to clarify that we are doing three to five cars an hour compared to what you would possibly see in a car wash. So I think maybe that's why they asked that question to we have and redo, I haven't talked to the traffic.
It's so, uh, we haven't heard back from them, but the discussion with our traffic engineer was to have counts during the peak months. Especially when Dairy Queen is open, which is a busy.
Right, and that, and that's why we wanted to make sure, I think, I know our guy said he would have that by the end of the week, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that. It's not, uh.
No, we're, we're aware of that, and then, yeah, so the, our traffic engineer was gonna come in if we needed him tonight. But it just didn't seem to make sense, you know, at this point, till they went back and forth with
Right.
information, um, so I just wanted to go through that, and then, um, we haven't heard back from Brad yet.
Just one point on the traffic, um, with the Dairy Queen. So, again, we do three, stay three to five cars an hour, four, forty, forty cars a day. Um, Dairy, I think Dairy Queen opens, like, it's, they're new to nine or whatever, so we overlap maybe twenty-five cars, twenty cars a day with Dairy Queen on our busiest day, we're, we're overlapping with that.
Yeah. It still seems to be.
I'm, I'm here, I found the plan, so I don't know.
Okay, now the bottom of the screen, the green share.
Okay, hold on.
If you could just hit that, and then we should be able to see your screen.
Alright, let me, uh, let me, uh, share, okay, hold on. Alright, you can see my screen now? Alright, let me, there we go. Are you able to see it now?
No.
No.
Hold on a second here.
On the left, you have a, is it, is there a video? His video's off, that's, could that be what?
Oh, maybe my video's off, alright, there we go, try that.
I don't think that would help.
Nah, it's, it's not allowing me to change my video, hold on, I'll do this again.
Oh, wait, something's happening, hold on.
You just had it.
Okay, so now, now.
Alright, so, yeah, hold on, oh. You see it now?
Yeah.
So you have thirty foot six and three-quarter inches to the ridge of the building, thirty-six foot two to the top of the cupola. Um, some other dimensions here, I'll slide over and give you a side elevation. Here is where the, uh, that gable is. See, here's the, here's the wall of the building, so we could make the wall come up here, and then we could bring the wall, the roof out to keep that in the same plane, I don't know if that makes any sense.
Oh, no, you, you're talking about the same plane as the E, but it is in the same plane of the front wall.
Right, the, the front wall is right here.
Yeah.
So, and right, right now, yes. So that, that, uh, that roof, the roof here kind of breaks up that wall. Just, I mean, rather than have it be one continuous wall where it goes from lateral horizontal area to a, a peaked or gabled area, um, just doesn't appear to be, I mean, kind of soften the lines a little bit, I think. So I think, you know, I think the regulations call for an operable, um, you know, fr, a door facing the street, which we've done. Uh, this particular location, customers don't even get out of their cars, they stay in their cars while the oil change is being done, so, um. We did, we did give it a, we did give the building a, uh, a functioning front door. Uh, we, we kept the, the setbacks and the different planes. Um, I wasn't sure if the regulations, uh, pertain to, uh, the east and the westerly side of the building, but we did, I think we complied with that part of the regulation for the, the two sides as well as the front. As far as the building goes, we've got, um, we've got like a masonry wainscote with a precast sill. As far as the building goes, we've got, um, we've got like a masonry wainscot with a precast sill, uh, fiber cement. Flatboard siding, uh, and then, you know, from the eaves up, we used a, a fiber cement cedar shake look. Um, we trimmed out the windows, got some louvers that we need, uh, functioning louvers for ventilation. Uh, black aluminum storefront, clear glass.
No reflective film on the doors.
No, yeah, no reflective film, if you, if you want, if you want, I can pull up, um, the, uh, a rendering that we have of the building that we submitted earlier. I don't know if that would help.
Sure, Jim.
Alright.
Just, just covering all the bases based on our recent experience.
Yeah, I understand, trying to.
We went through that with ARB and we were very clear with them that this non-reflective glass or no reflective film, clear glass, they want people to be able to see in. Cause it's part of the advertising room.
Hold on, I'm trying here, uh, let's see if I can find. Let me see. Let's try this one here. There we go.
So the sign has changed a little bit, but the one that they have in front of them is the current one approved by ARB, but the general dimensions and overall look of the building is the same.
Right, exactly.
But it's, it, it might work, but this is new information because we didn't get the site elevation drawings.
It's, it's fine, it sounds like you're waiting on some comments back from the traffic engineer anyway, so we're. We didn't really expect this to be one and done in one meeting, so we come back in three weeks, I guess.
Two weeks.
The proposed ground sign, is that part of this application? The ground sign? Is the ground sign part of this application?
Yes.
Uh, where is it located on the plan?
Right over there.
Okay, and um, it's, it's the height of the sign, uh, according to.
Sixty inches.
Section sixty-four point three point six is measured to the top of the finial. Including the decorative finial, and so this. Submission here stops at the top of the sign, we need the height to the, including the decorative finial.
Decorative finial is less, is less than one.
That's not on.
Right, it's less than one foot, we discussed that with ARB, they approved the sign, um, we're allowed to be six foot high and uh.
But whatever it is, it's gotta be.
It's.
It's gotta be in the materials submitted, and there's a little picture on, with that regulation in, in the regulations.
Yep, we know the regulation, we'll just move that dimension up a couple of inches there, give you that overall dimension.
So can we just kind of quickly go through and see who has what for materials? So you, you got the plans for tonight that Joe submitted with the cover letter and the renderings here and the changes to the mechanicals. It sounds like you didn't get the actual application, so no application, no zoning site plan. No cam, did you get the cam out? No, no statement of use?
No.
So we got a floor plan? Um, no.
No.
Um, there was a base survey. You did, you just got revisions of this tonight, this was the.
No, that's the same, but you got the supplement of the list.
That was from tonight, so this is the same, you have this. I don't get that, okay, so you don't have that. Photometric? No? So Joe, I think what happened was it just came in with the, with the one zoning app. And then.
Ed, Ed, I know Ed submitted everything and he followed up with the electronics, I was just going through the emails and it sounds like it was all fully submitted, but.
So anyway, right.
Guess what you need?
So yeah, so we can get that, uh, eight copies of that for the commission. Look at that. So what I've done too is I've asked Joanne just to keep an eye on, since it was the first night of the hearing and they had no. Materials, just to kind of keep that eye out in the future, so we can try to prevent this.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I am completely not wanting to have to copy plans to have the revisions in that, but. This happens.
That's fine.
There's fortunately, I don't have time to chase you down.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I know, I know that I submitted everything, it's just a matter of where I'm. And it was also an electronic file, though. But that's fine, I mean, regardless of that, um, it sounds like there's some open traffic items that you're recommending. They've been behind like three weeks or so, so since we committed this, you probably submitted to them at the same time, so. This week or next, I don't know.
Yeah, so you need that in place before the commission can approve.
That a new reform.
No, it's under fifty one for site plan.
They usually, um, I mean, there's really, there's a couple toilets in this building, there's really no domestic floor, also the subject are very simple. This soil on site is, is fairly good, um, it's great, this area is, it's just a short run, but it's um. Usually they're, they're a pretty quick turnaround, but they've been a little behind.
So actually, that kind of gets me onto one more question here, um. Our next meeting is July seventh?
Right.
I just want to check if we have a quorum, because I know a lot of times people go on, but I just want to make sure we're here. Is everyone available July seventh?
Yes.
After the long holiday weekend, that's.
I'm not sure, took the week off, I don't have plans, set plans.
Joe, you're available?
We will wait near, I'll be here.
July seventh, you're available?
July seventh, yes, great.
So we have one, alright, so we'll have a quorum. And Mark will be. I just asked, it's just in past experience, often you get around the fourth of July and there is a, oh, sorry, communication. Okay, so July seventh?
I'll make a, make a motion to continue public hearing on this application for the Mount Vernon Company. Uh, oil change facility at thirteen thirty-three Boston Post Road. To our next regularly scheduled meeting and hybrid meeting of Monday, July seventh. At seven PM at Town Hall three oh two Main Street, first floor conscience. Zero sec.
Second.
Laura, great sec. Any discussion on the motion to continue, all in favor signify, I say aye. Aye, close, motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you, Chris, can I just confirm the items that some did not get, so we can make sure you get those.
The, um, the application, the green sheet, the pink sheet, the yellow sheet, the coastal. Management application.
Like if, if, um, we're just, like if that came in with packets and the applications weren't there, I think that would have been.
So what happened was the initially came in with one.
Yeah.
To do the submittal and didn't want to do the revisions for ARB, this is actually going on with an application, another application coming up.
Okay.
So what happened was, I can understand why you wouldn't want to keep printing plan sets. For that, so he submitted one application. For the record, we started referrals and the scheduling, cause all our stuff now is electronic for the most part for referrals. And then when the packets last week. Um, that's where, that was the issue, it didn't make it into the package for the last week, that was that package for like the, we were talking about Wednesday and Sarah was like, it's just done.
I got you, that makes, that makes.
Cause the packets already went out, so we'll just try to, Joanne is gonna keep an eye on, we're gonna just try to make sure, okay, we can avoid this. Also, statement of use, floor plans, landscaping plans, the photometric plans. And then there was a bunch of materials, there was photographs of some neighboring properties. I think pretty much it's all the eight and a half by eleven documents, the. Floor landscaping photometric and all the application.
Yeah, there's no way he would have submitted a thoughtful information.
No, I have it for the file, I only submitted one.
Yeah.
So he submitted one for the file and then the revisions were gonna come, so that's what, we never got the revision, so rather than have an outdated site plan.
Right.
Say you made nine copies for this commission and then all changed from ARB and Jeff, I think he was thinking. We would get the applications in by the time the packets went out last Monday. When Joanne did the packets, there was nothing for the packets. Because they're gonna follow up with the ARB.
That's strange, but it is what it is, that's fine, we'll.
If we had that much paper around, we'd find.
Right, right. Um, yeah, it's just.
Unless for some reason, due to, it's went to the ARB, which seems unlikely, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, they, they had everything.
Well, because they were the ones, we took, I think we just did the nine applications. So we did nine packets, eight for the ARB numbers and one for the file. And then rather than give the commission a set of plans and give them another set of plans tonight, the thought was.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk to Ed about that tomorrow, but again, like I said, because of traffic and whenever we're coming back, so make sure you have all that stuff this week. Will be in really good shape for July so.
Uh, committee representative, Darren's staff report, anything?
Nothing super exciting, um, plugging away.
Okay, um. Housing Task Force has not met since the last time.
So that, so the, well, we've got stuff going on, I'm working on a grant with DOH. I'm working on a grant with the DOH. So even though you're not meeting, you have to, the housing task force has to review the thrive plan. And then I'm doing some stuff behind the scenes rather than.
I think the housing task force might well be im- uh, impacted. As to whether or not, by whether or not the governor signs House Bill five zero zero two. It's in his hands, but I have not heard that he has signed it yet. A lot to do with housing and zoning and stuff.
Thank you.
So we'll wait, wait and see. If ninety-one pages long.
Yeah. So I know Mark's not here, um, but I, I will tell you from the wetlands commission, they were appealed. Um, for denying ninety-one Sheffield Street. Um, the proposal was to fill the wetland for housing and build another wetland. Um, I know some of you know, I just figured I would pass that along.
I didn't know that they have killed it.
I can send it to you if you want to read it.
No, no.
Alright. We had a lot going on, I mean, I keep going, I don't figure, I figured, I didn't really prepare for the staff report, figuring you're gonna have a long night with these two, but.
You wrote, remember you said I'm jotting these down?
You jotted them down.
Good, any signals? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We made the motion, John Henry seconded, all in favor, uh, unanimous, no, thank you.